The activities that directly impact us and all of the students of this district. We ask Father always for your guidance in our discussion and deliberation that we will consider the opportunities that we can allow all of our students to be successful so they can have academic success in our district. And may we always be an encouragement to them and a supporter of our educators as they work with all of those students. Father, we are thankful for our VIPs that we have an opportunity to say thank you and recognize the high level of academic success that they are able to instill in our students in the classroom. And especially for those students that we can acknowledge them and ensure that they appreciate and understand that we as the school district are so proud of them and their academic accomplishments. Father, we ask always for your guidance and everything that we undertake and ask always that you will bless us as we strive to serve you. And this is our prayer in your loving son's name. Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This is kind of our most exciting time of year and we're glad you took time to come and spend a little bit of your evening with us. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for all students. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. But for the record, we are all here tonight. We do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, we will now proceed with agenda item number two, recognition of special guests and announcements. And Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Good evening, everyone. We do appreciate you being here tonight. We're going to begin with honoring our VIPs and I always like to start these recognitions by quoting a famous philosopher that we all know and love, Dr. Seuss. "Today you are you; that is truer than true. There is no one alive who is you-er than you." Tonight, we are here to celebrate you, our VIPs, our very important professionals. Twenty-seven years ago, we started celebrating you and the ones before you are excellent CFB educators. This is our way of saying thank you for being you, teacher, educator, caregiver, friend, and much more. You work relentlessly every day to help our students achieve at the highest levels. You care, you work diligently. That's you and why we're here to celebrate you. So friends and family, stand when "you're you" is introduced so we can honor you as well. So now, Ms. Klein, would you join me in the front to recognize our VIPs?
Thank you.
My name is Joe LaPuma and I have the honor of being the principal at Creekview High School. Thank you for having us here tonight and allowing us to recognize Creekview's newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Leah Waters. Leah is a graduate of Angelo State with a Bachelor's of Art in Journalism and a Master's of Arts in Curriculum and Instruction. She's been at Creekview for a grand total of two years. And she is being recognized tonight because of the positive impact she has made at Creekview during those two years. She is here with her husband Jim, who is also a coach and an educator in a neighboring district, and I think he's on his way because he was coaching. So Jim, welcome. And I wrote in here, Jim, thank you for sharing Leah with us. We do appreciate it. Well, where do I start? This young lady has done so much at Creekview over the last two years. But I'm going to start here. There are three ways the teachers make a difference in student achievement. One, instructional strategies. Two, student relationships. Three, content knowledge. Mrs. Waters has shown great skills in each of these areas over the last two years, and I have three student testimonials that I will share as my evidence. Senior Morgan Price had the following to say. "Ms. Waters is the best teacher I've ever had. I have never had a teacher be more inspiring than her. She does so much for the school and for her students." When I signed up for journalism for my junior year, I took it just for an interesting elective, but because of Mrs. Waters, I fell in love with journalism. You can tell she loves her job and loves journalism, and because she has so much passion for it, you can't help but enjoy her classes. Another senior, Michael George, who just received a full ride to the University of Texas, shared these insightful words. "Mrs. Waters is the most kind, considerate, and generous person I know. She would go out of her way to help her students with any problems. Within the past two years, she has single-handedly grown the yearbook, the newspaper, the Mustang Media into great programs that they are today. This is a testimony to her dedication to her job. She goes above and beyond to help her students succeed." And lastly, senior editor Laura Mitchell said, "Mrs. Waters is easily the most dedicated teacher I have ever had. She's very passionate about what she does and is optimistic in every situation. I consider myself blessed that I know her. Her classroom is my home away from home. Her devotion to her students is amazing and we all love her so much." She said, "Actually, honestly, Mrs. Waters is my role model." Leah teaches photojournalism, yearbook, and newspaper. She serves on the leadership team and is one of our campus ambassadors. Leah is an innovator and is keeping our students on the cutting edge of the ever-so-quickly and changing multimedia market. Graphic design, multimedia announcements, and changing our newspaper format to a magazine design are a couple of the examples of her body of work. You can also go to YouTube and see how she has organized the entire school for our first ever lip dub last year. Leah recently coached our journalism team at the District UIL Academic Competition, and yes, they're champions now. One of her students also won the Best Feature Photo for the Dallas Morning News Journalism Day Contest, and he received great recognition for that. The last two years, I have actually had several students come to me and say, "Ms. LaPuma, thank you for hiring her. You made a great choice." Leah, thank you so much for all you do, and indeed, Creekview High School and CFB is very fortunate to have you in the very important profession of teaching.
And the board, I'm Joe Pouncy, principal of Newman Smith High School, and I'm very pleased to introduce to you our new VIP, Ms. Dawn Valentine. Ms. Valentine grew up in Plano. She attended TWU, graduated cum laude with a Bachelor of Science degree in dance and theater in 1993. She quickly went to work as a theater teacher at Blaylac Middle School. Dance is her passion, so she accepted a dance teaching job at Newman Smith, and the rest, like Paul Harvey used to say, is history. That's the rest of the story. That was 19 years ago, and her creativity and drive has led to the development of one of the most successful dance programs in North Texas. This past year, Ms. Valentine has taught all levels of dance, and she serves as the Fine Arts Department Chair at Newman Smith High School. She is a very, very busy person. She has involved herself in graduate work at UTA, performed professionally in the Galveston Island Outdoor Musicals, taught dance at Collin County Community College, danced with the Ellie Dance Work Dance Company, and works freelance in choreography. Valentine has founded two dance companies at Newman Smith. In 1994, she founded the Dance Gallery, followed by Gallery in Motion. The two dance companies are extremely popular and their dance performances produce very, very great results. Matter of fact, every time they have a program, we have standing room only at the Pauline Keaton Smith Performing Arts Theater. Now, Dawn Valentine is extremely organized. You can ask her husband. Matter of fact, she is disgustingly organized. She teaches dance classes, conducts workshops, staff development programs for the Center for Educated Development and Fine Arts. She also conducts workshops for the Texas Dance Educators Association. She coordinates the musicals at Newman Smith and takes care of her family. She's, you know, in a spare time, she leaps tall buildings on a single bound. Anyway, her expertise, creativity, and knowledge makes her a priceless member of the Newman Smith faculty. Now, Dawn Valentine is married to Michael Valentine. Now, Michael is a theater teacher at Newman Smith. Yes, they met at Smith, and I won't get into that. But they are two outstanding educators, and we're pleased to have them. They have two boys, Jace, he's 11, where's Jace? Raise your hand. And Kyler, he's eight. Is he over there, too? There he is. And so we would like everyone here to please welcome our newest VIP, Ms. Dawn Valentine.
Our next recognition tonight, we will do our National Merit Award recipients. And first to present will be principal at Creekview High School, Mr. Joe LaPuma.
Good evening. Once again, Creekview High School is pleased to honor and celebrate a total of 14 students for three different achievements this evening. We have six National Merit finalists, six commended scholars, and two National Achievement Scholars. Approximately 1.5 million high school juniors take the PSAT qualifying test each year. Only 16,000 seniors are named semifinalists representing less than 1% of the top high school seniors in the United States of America. About 15,000 finalists are named in February and are eligible for merit scholarships. I am pleased to introduce six of our students from Creekview High School being recognized as National Merit finalists. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. Parents, please stand when your student is recognized. And I know not all the students are here because obviously they're very busy, but we will introduce everybody nonetheless. Daniel is the son of Richard and Martini Chin. Daniel attended Sullivan Elementary in British Columbia, Canada, and Discovery Middle School in Orlando, Florida. Daniel is a member of the Creekview Orchestra, and Daniel plans to attend the University of North Texas and study either music or engineering. Next is Sunena Delvani. Sunena is not here. Sunena is the daughter of Shabnum and Nissar Delvani. Sunena attended Cleveland Bailey Elementary in Oklahoma and DeWitt Perry Middle School, just around the corner. She is a Student Council Executive Officer, Vice President of the Law Academy, and a member of the Spanish National Honor Society. Sunena plans to attend the University of Pennsylvania, UT Austin, or the University of Chicago. Next is Jeremy Dowell. Jeremy is the son of Greg and Kay Dowell. Jeremy attended Kent and McCoy Elementary Schools and Perry Middle School. Jeremy is Senior Exec Vice President and Student Body Vice President. Jeremy plans to attend Rice University and major in Chemical Engineering. Next is Samantha Gu. Samantha is the daughter of Jennifer Wang and Yu-Fu Gu. She attended Sheffield Primary, McCoy Elementary, and DeWitt Perry Middle School. She is a Greater Dallas Youth Orchestra Concertmaster, president of Plano Teen Harmony, a member of the All-Region and All-State Orchestra, and a member of the National Honor Society. She's also Creekview salutatorian. Samantha plans to major in Electrical Engineering at UC Berkeley, Texas A&amp;M, or the University of Texas at Austin. Next is Tong Nguyen. Tong, there he is. Tang is the son of Tuan Nguyen. He attended an elementary in Vietnam and Blaylac Middle School. He's a member of the National Honor Society and is Vice President of the Key Club. He plans to major in Psychology, and as of this writing, he hadn't decided on a university. So we still have time, no worries. Next is Melody Purdy, and I know she is not here tonight. But Melanie is daughter of Ellie Palmas and Dwayne Purdy. Melanie attended Holy Cross Lutheran and Ferno Elementary Schools as well as Blaylac Middle School. She is president of choir, show choir captain, and Texas All-State Choir member. She is also a member of the National Honor Society. Melanie will attend the Honors College at Oklahoma University to major in Biology, and then her plans are for her to go to medical school. Of the more than 1.5 million students who entered this competition, only 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. These students rank in the top 5% of all the students who took the qualifying test. I am pleased to introduce six students from Creekview High School who are being recognized tonight as National Merit Commended Students. So students, when I call your name, please come forward. And of course, parents, please stand when your child is recognized. First, Amanda Karasik. Amanda, are you here? I do not see Amanda. But Amanda is our valedictorian. Amanda is also the daughter of Mickey and Herb Karasik. Amanda attended Rainwater Elementary as well as Blaylac Middle School. She is Vice President of the National Honor Society and a member of our state placing Academic Decathlon Team. She plans to major in Biochemistry at the University of Texas at Dallas, then attend medical school as well. Amanda Karasik. Next is Josie Kelsey. Josie is the daughter of Jan Kelsey. Josie attended Sheffield Primary, McCoy Elementary, Perry, and Blaylac Middle Schools. Josie is the president of the Cheval's Drill Team, National Honor Society historian, and recipient of the Gandhi Nightingale Crimson Honor for Compassion. Josie plans to study Broadcast News or Public Relations at Drake University. Diana Kern is next, and I believe she had a previous commitment. But Diana is the daughter of Brian and Jennifer Kern. She attended Perry and Long Middle Schools here in CFB. She's a member of the Japanese club, and she has not decided where she will attend college, but let's give Diana Kern a round of applause. Our next scholar is Moon Kim. Moon is the son of Sung Hwa and Jung Kim. Moon attended Davis Elementary and Blaylac Middle School, and he plans to be an Aggie at Texas A&amp;M and major in Civil Engineering. Our next scholar is Philip Kwan. Philip is the son of Suk and Son Yi Kwan. Philip attended Kent and Blaylac. Philip is a member of the Creekview Orchestra, and he will be attending the University of Houston, where he will major in Biology. Next is William Sliker. William is not here, but he is the son of John and Sylvia Sliker. William attended Rainwater Elementary and Blaylac Middle School. William is president of the CHS Key Club and member of the GSA in Academic Decathlon Team. William plans to study Biochemistry at the University of Texas at Dallas. William Sliker. We have a couple more. Yes, I said 14, so a couple more. The National Achievement Scholarship Program is an academic competition established to honor Black American high school students. Of the more than 160,000 students who enter this program, 3,100 have been honored as outstanding scholars and participants by the National Merit Corporation. I'm very pleased to introduce two students from Creekview High School being recognized as National Achievement recipients. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. Parents, please stand. Love to recognize you as well. And first, I see here sitting right over there is Christina Maxey. Christina is the daughter of Brenda Maxey. Christina attended Kent Elementary and Blaylac Middle School. She's a member of the Creekview Band and the National Honor Society. Creekview, she plays, she's a great drummer in the band, by the way. Christina plans to attend either Rice University or the University of Texas at Austin, and she plans to go to medical school as well. Last on our list, but definitely not least, is Farren Heptitsian. I don't believe she is here. Farren is the daughter of Goetam Heptitsian. Farren attended Allstate Episcopal Day Church, Calverton Middle School in Baltimore, Maryland, Edie Walker Middle School in Dallas, and Blaylac Middle School here in CFB. Farren is a treasurer of the Law Academy Board of Representatives, an executive officer for Student Council, and a member of the Misrepresentation Social Action Representatives. Please help me congratulate all of our outstanding students tonight. We are very proud of each of you.
It's Mr. Pouncy, right? Yeah. Mr. Pouncy from Newman Smith High School.
Dr. Burns, members of the board, we are delighted to present to you 13 scholars this afternoon. These are outstanding young men and women, and we are so very proud of them. You know, we talk to them all the time about not being average, and we say average is not in demand, and they're living proof that they are extraordinary. They are extraordinary scholars, they're extraordinary people, and we're so happy to present them to you tonight. Our National Hispanic Recognition Scholars now, and Mr. LaPuma did a great job explaining these categories, but let me just mention something about the National Hispanic Recognition Program. It identifies academically outstanding Hispanic-Latino high school students based on their PSAT score. Each year, the National Hispanic Recognition Program honors 5,000 of the high-scoring students from over 250,000 Hispanic-Latino juniors who take the test. Now, our National Hispanic Recognition Scholars are Eduardo Roca. Is Eduardo here? There he is. Now, his parents are Jose and Daria. Now, he also is a Texas Music Educator Association, 2013 All-State Symphony Band Member, so he made Allstate as a band member this year. He will attend the University of Texas or Texas Tech and major in Mechanical Engineering. Please welcome Eduardo. Mother is Emma Aguilar Hill. She's a national, she's a member of the National Honor Society, the National Art Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society. Will attend Carnegie Mellon University to major in Biomedical Engineering. Kendall Munoz. Well, anyway, Kendall will attend the University of Oklahoma and major in Journalism. Parents are David and Benny Delaru. She's in the marching band, student venture, she's academic all-state in track and field. Will attend Baylor University and major in Biology, pre-health studies for a career as a physical therapist. Gracia Rena. Rena. Let me do that again. Gracia Reyna. Okay, she might be with the other kids studying. Anyway, Gracia is a member of the National Honor Society. She's captain of the tennis team, and she will attend the University of Texas and major in Business Marketing. Let's see. Karen Paninaqua. Okay, we got a lot of scholars tonight. She will attend the University of North Texas and major in English. Now, the National Achievement Scholars that Professor LaPuma talked about earlier, they represent some of the high-scoring African-American students on the PSAT as juniors, and this program started in 1964, and more than 160,000 students entered this very competitive program each year, and from that number, about 4,700 are honored. And from that number, about 3,100 are selected to be scholars in this program. Our National Achievement Scholars are Ariet Agnew. Her parents are Willie and Maitre Agnew. She is in the International Business Academy, National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, senior class president. Will attend the University of Texas or the University of Oklahoma or Baylor University. Will major in international business once she find a school. Ms. Agnew. Parents are Sarah and Olin Howard. Now, Zach is in the Interact Club, that's Rotary, California French Rotary. He's in the French Club, National French Honor Society, National Honor Society, academic all-state in soccer. Will attend the University of Oklahoma and major in International Business Relations. Now, Terrance Polk is not with us this night, tonight. He's got a band competition, but Terrance is, will attend the University of Houston and major in Physics. Now, our National Merit Commended Scholars are Amber Marco. Mother is Sharon Marco. She's in the International Business Academy, member of DECA, has 49 college credits already via Brookhaven and other means, so I guess she will enroll in college as maybe a sophomore. Will attend the University of Houston and major in Hotel Restaurant Management. Amber Marco. Amber Marco. Philip Vong. Parents are Sang and Kimberly. He's in the orchestra, Academic Decathlon, will attend the University of Texas and major in mechanical engineering. Mother is Toni Uplinger. She's a great violinist, she's in the symphonic band, she's French Club, National French Honor Society, captain of the cross-country team, will attend Rice University and major in biochemistry and cell biology. Welcome, Taylor Uplinger. Last but not least, let's see, Travis McDonald. Parents are Carrie and Dwayne McDonald. He's an anime club president, will attend the University of Texas at Dallas and major in actuarial sciences. Very smart guy. And I believe that's our list of scholars, I hope I've not overlooked anyone.
You know, we always talk about evidence of high achievement, and so it's always nice to bring it up here and show the evidence, and so, students, thank you for your hard work, and all that work and effort paid off, didn't it? The next recognition on our agenda tonight has to do with our business office, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hyatt to recognize a pretty significant accomplishment in our accounting office. So, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I'll ask Ms. Tillman to join you at the front. Tonight, we're recognizing the district's business office, led by Ms. Tanya Tillman, for their efforts in receiving an award from the Association of School Business Officials International, well-known as ASBO, and this award to the school district was for its meritorious budget award product. And I told Tanya I would hold up the book, because this is the ultimate product that she led in the production. And I didn't see Scott come in, Scott Roder helps her in this.
He's over there.
Scott, come up to the front, too, you don't get away from this. Scott sometimes, come on up. Scott sometimes doesn't like to step to the front on this particular one, because Scott leads our efforts, particularly with our comprehensive annual financial reports, but without that report, this one would be impossible, and Vicki Pippen was also instrumental, I don't think Vicki was able to come tonight. What makes this award important, and this is an award for meritorious, let me see, meritorious budget award for excellence in budget presentation. What makes that important, ladies and gentlemen, is the fact that we debate and discuss what we like or don't like with our budget in the school district. What we decide to spend and what we decide we can't afford because there's only so much money in the world. And those are truly important issues, but one thing that allows us to have those debates and allows us to have those public discussions is to have fair and accurate representations of what that information is. If you don't have good information to base your decision on, the gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen on your school board can't make good decisions. And these people before you are the primary reasons that we have received an award as a school district, that the way we put together our budget document is seen as above and beyond the norm. Just a few statistics that I think are important, we've received this award every year since 2003, that's important that we're consistent in the way we do it, but more importantly, over 5,000 members of this association participate. Only 20 school districts in the state of Texas receive this award. I think that's significant. And just to expand this beyond, this is, it's an international organization, predominantly US and Canada, only 120 school districts in the United States and Canada receive this award. I believe this is significant, and these guys deserve a lot of credit, and I am proud to work with them.
I'd say if you do it 10 years in a row, it's probably not an accident. We have some announcements we'd like to share with you, so if you turn your attention
Good evening, and welcome to another exciting edition of the CFB ISD Board Announcements for the month of May. We have a lot to get to, so we are going to start right away with our announcements. And first off, we want to thank everyone who made the Carrollton Farmers Branch Job Fair such a huge success. Thank you to the 250 staff members that helped to make the day great for the 1,025 applicants who want to make our district their home. On May 10th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the historic downtown Carrollton Square, CFB ISD will celebrate public education by honoring our staff and volunteers for their work and dedication. The event will have a bounce house, carnival games for kids, free food, blue ball ice cream, and much more. Come join us for the great event honoring our staff and volunteers. Election Day for local elections is Saturday, May 11th. Early voting continues through May 7. You can find a list of voting locations by visiting the election information page on the district's website at www.cfbisd.edu/election. And another date to mark on your calendars is May 24th. We do not use our bad weather day this year, so this date will be a district holiday. And another holiday on the district calendar is Monday, May 27th, which is Memorial Day. All schools and district offices will be closed on this day. After we get back from this four-day weekend, all schools will be gearing up for the end of the school year. Early release days this year fall on June 5th and 6th. Check the district website at www.cfbisd.edu/events for the time your school will be ending on these days. June 6th marks the last day of school for students. And with the end of the school year, that means all of our great students at all our great high schools will be graduating. Early college high school will kick off the 2013 graduation schedule on Friday, May 31st at 7:00 p.m. at the Performance Hall on the Brookhaven College Campus. The rest of the high schools' graduations will be on Sunday, June 9th, at the University of North Texas Coliseum. The schedule is as follows. Newman Smith will start at 9:00 a.m., then Turner will be next at 1:00 p.m., then Creekview at 4:00 p.m., and then Ranchview will be the last to graduate at 7:00 p.m. Congratulations to all of our graduates. Want the very best education for your child? Well, check out the top 10 reasons to join CFB ISD at www.cfbisd.edu/toten. Are you outside the district boundaries of CFB? Well, there is still a chance your child can attend this great district. CFB ISD has opened its boundaries for students who live outside our district to attend specific schools in CFB. To find out if you qualify, visit www.cfbisd.eduopen. That's it for tonight's announcements. Our next regular school board meeting is Thursday, June 6th at 7:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the administration building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. Thank you so much for tuning in. Good night.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, that concludes our special recognition and announcements.
Well, thank you to Creekview and Newman Smith for bringing your use to us tonight to recognize. Y'all really do make a difference, and like Dr. Burns said, we have evidence here. But, parents, thank you for choosing Carrollton Farmers Branch. If you didn't choose our school district, we couldn't feel successful by being able to help educate your kids. Teachers, we always appreciate what y'all do for our kids, but students, thank you for all your hard work. And Mr. Pouncy, I'm surprised your seniors don't get senioritis and they're still busy working. Especially, was it studying? Is that what you said, the absentee ones were doing? But I think we have a lot to be proud of, and like I said, this is really the most amazing time of year, and the one that we all enjoy the most, and we enjoy celebrating all your successes with the student. Mr. Hyatt, Ms. Tillman, and Mr. Roderick, thank you for presenting our budget well and keeping us clean. So, thank you for what y'all do to get, we trust what y'all do very much and rely on it a lot, so thank you. Dr. Burns, at this time, if you're okay, we'd like to take a brief recess for those that may not want to spend the rest of the evening with us. It is currently 7:41. We'll take a 10-minute recess, and those that want to stay and see the superintendent's report next will convene back at 7:51 p.m. Thank y'all. At 7:51 p.m. Our next agenda item is item number three, report by Superintendent Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the board, as you know, part of our regular agenda item is to present student achievement to you, and tonight, the topic is social studies. So, our Director of Social Studies is Ms. Pierre Larson, and she is here tonight to tell you the good things happening in social studies, as well as the things that we need to work on, so.
That is correct.
Ms. Larson.
Good evening, Mrs. Klein, members of the board, Dr. Burns. I'd like to begin this evening with a play on words. Social studies matters. We will indeed be talking about matters related to social studies this evening, but by the end of our time together, I hope you'll agree with me, when it comes to high achievement for all students, social studies matters. Social studies has direct impact on two supporting objectives of the district's goal of high achievement for all students. Objective number one, continuously increasing student achievement, and objective number two, continuously improving the learning environments for staff and students. Let's begin with objective one. For 10 years, social studies was flying high in the achievement world. Beginning in 2003, Barbara Caffey's years of careful stewardship paid off. The district was nine points above the state average. Under John David, CFB continued its trend, although the rest of the state was making progress. The data for 2012 isn't included because 8th grade took the STAR test for the first time last year rather than the tax test. Unfortunately, despite anecdotal evidence, high tax scores did not necessarily mean high achievement. Bolstered by low passing standards and tests that did not always align with course content, it was easy to be lulled into thinking social studies didn't matter. Social studies assessments have changed. Let me briefly remind you of the differences between a tax question and a STAR question on the social studies test. Student expectation 8.10 in the 8th grade geography strand states, "The student understands the location and characteristics of places and regions of the United States, past and present." 8.10A specifically states, "Compare places and regions of the United States in terms of physical and human characteristics." On the tax test for this particular student expectation, students were given photographs of two places in the United States, one past, one present, and asked what the two images show about the environment. The answer to the question was right there in the images. The environment can be altered to suit human habitation. On the STAR test, unlike the tax test, this type of question doesn't exist, because it's actually against the law to provide cues or clues in questions on the test. One of the things that dramatically increases the rigor of the STAR test is dual coding. Students must apply a social studies process skill and content knowledge to a stimulus piece in order to demonstrate understanding. For instance, in this released STAR item, Process Skill 29J states, "Students must be able to pose and answer questions about geographic distributions and patterns shown on maps, graphs, charts, models, and databases." The question asks, "Which of these best explains the change in population and distribution of US cities from 1850 to 1870?" Here are the steps a student might need to go through to answer this question. What do they know about the time period 1850 to 1870? The Civil War, westward movement occurred, industrialization, and growth of railroads. What do the two maps and the key tell them? Population of states and cities increased over that 20-year period of time. The answers include the following possibilities. Homestead legislation? Yes, the Homestead Act passed in 1862. Admission of new states to the Union? That also occurred, as is evident from the maps, but would that necessarily have caused that population growth? C, expansion of the railroad system and increased industrialization. In 1869, the Golden Spike joined the Central and Union Pacific, sorry, the Union and Central Pacific Railroad to complete the first transcontinental railroad in the United States, very close to that large population in Utah that shows on the map, in the 1870 map. And yes, industrialization could have caused the growth of cities. Emancipation of slaves after the Civil War. Emancipation did occur in 1865, but would it have been responsible for that much growth? This is certainly not the same kind of question that would have been found on the tax test. C is the correct answer, but as you can see, the three distractors were all viable choices based on the dates. And social studies teachers who analyzed the question would tell you the maps are just a distraction. Technically, you might not even need them. A student, on the other hand, might look at the maps and notice, well, new states were admitted to the Union, and assume that would be the correct answer. The maps show the population and distribution of cities change over time, but if you know what was happening in the United States between 1850 and 1870, you could answer the question without the maps. What makes the whole situation slightly trickier? In the past, teachers didn't always make it past the Civil War to the second burst of industrialization that occurred during Reconstruction. The bottom line is, the test is harder and it's more rigorous. Two years ago, in order to prepare our students, we created Common Unit Tests that mirror STAR released items in grades 6 through 11. We'll continue to give students complex distractors, dual-coded questions, and opportunities to infer from stimulus pieces to prepare them for the STAR test. As CFB's 8th, 9th, and 10th graders venture into the real world of accountability, solid social studies instruction matters. Here's how things turned out in 2012. As you can see, in 8th grade, we're above the state average in most areas, but being above the state average is not our focus. Our goal is to become number one in the state as measured by ERG. Before we look at the World Geography and of Course Exam data, I'd like to give you a little background. The first social studies end of course was uncharted territory in a subject that had never been tested before. Prior to May 2012, 9th grade World Geography students hadn't been held accountable on a state level for the content of their course. What they did have at the end of their sophomore year was a tax test comprised of predominantly 8th grade US history and government content with a smattering of geography and economics. Now, there is a direct correlation between what is taught in a World Geography course and what is assessed at the end of the year. How did CFB World Geography students fare in 2012? Again, we're slightly above the state, three points in most areas, but there is considerable variance among our subpops. In both 8th grade and World Geography, there is a striking difference between the achievement level of students who receive reduced lunch and students who receive free lunch. Although poverty level is a documented variable for Although poverty level is a documented variable for student achievement, in this district, we are committed to high achievement for all students. The ERG data shows the added value of our instructional level, and as a component of that instruction, social studies matters. When compared to surrounding districts with similar demographics, we have work to do. Looking at the six districts ahead of us in ERG, once again, it's HEB and Richardson. After looking at the data and speaking with my counterparts from surrounding districts, it comes down to tightly aligning 6th and 9th grade curriculum and making as many geography connections in Texas, 7th grade Texas history as possible, which we're working on. We also redesigned our World Geography curriculum based on a thematic approach. Vertical alignment and tightly aligned curriculum is key. Now you've seen the data. The last area I'd like to share is the district work we've been engaged in in the last three years. Dr. Mayer asked, Dr. Mayer asked the content directors, which two things we spend our time on have the greatest impact on student achievement? My two are curriculum work and professional development for teachers. In reflecting over social studies for the past three years, and how that work affects objective number two, continuously improving the learning environment for students and staff, several things come to mind. It's very difficult to build a strong social studies, strong secondary social studies program without a robust elementary program. By capitalizing on the strengths of elementary teachers, building critical social studies vocabulary, and looking through the lens of 8th grade in order to spiral critical concepts and content as we develop curriculum, we'll build a strong district-wide social studies program. The second takeaway is authentic literacy is critical. Speaking from my own experience and observations over the past few years, most secondary social studies teachers assume students come into their classroom knowing how to read. Students may indeed know how to read, but they do not necessarily know how to read a primary document, or a dense expository history text, or think like a historian. Secondary teachers really weren't aware of how important modeling thinking aloud is. On the other hand, after having multiple opportunities to observe elementary campuses, that is one of their strengths. Social studies courses have more teacs, more people, places, events, than any other content area, and secondary social studies teachers definitely know how to focus on the content. In order to help CFB students make meaning, secondary teachers really need to hone in on the social studies process skills, like analyzing, categorizing, identifying cause and effect relationships, and point of view, to name a few. That's been the focus of our professional development, from all, the all-district secondary training with Smokey Daniels in October of 2011, to summer sessions on historical investigation. My final observation, if you look at the distribution of dots at the end of the timeline, is the power of collaboration and developing teachers. My final observation is, this year, teacher groups have come together multiple times, because we learn best with and through others. It's the best professional development there is. They have the opportunity to collaborate, to discuss content, to ask questions, which raises the level of teaching throughout the district as they share their best practices. All of them have been eager to return. As you can see, our best resources is the amazing CFB social studies teachers, who truly understand just how much social studies matters. And now, for a few bright spots. In high school, last fall, Turner's Robin Elliott received the Gilder Lehrman Teacher of the Year Award for the state of Texas. At McCoy Elementary in April, 4th grader Pranay Virada took second place in the State National Geography, National Geographic Geography B. And four students from Blalack Middle School represented the district for the first time at the State History B. Marcelo Rodriguez is on the left, and Mason Hyde on the right. Mason advanced to the National History B finals in Atlanta. Tonight, I focused almost exclusively on secondary social studies. After all, that's where the tests are. STAR is a test that requires a rigorous curriculum with multiple opportunities daily to engage in higher-order thinking, but it's preparation that can't be crammed into middle school. There is far too much ground to cover, far too much vocabulary to make up in 6th and 7th grade. It takes consistent exposure to social studies concepts from kindergarten all the way up. Social studies matters on all campuses. And tonight, I'd like to share a bright spot that makes the case for a robust elementary social studies program far more eloquently than my words ever could. I give you Steve Songson's 5th grade class.
Identify the major events that led to the creation and approval of the Declaration of Independence, and I will construct history by analyzing primary and secondary sources. And of course, today, we're on, on our primary source. The second primary source document that we looked at was what? You can raise your hand and tell me. Is that mine?
It was Common Sense pamphlet made by Thomas Paine.
Very good, a pamphlet made by Thomas Paine called Common Sense. To think back quickly about what Common Sense was about, please turn and talk to your neighbors at your table, and think about, what was Common Sense about? What did it tell us?
It was about peace.
It's like you're an Indian, and your mom is here, and she's saying, "Insha, give me your money," but I can't, because I'm like all the way over here, that's sort of like King George paying the taxes. He is all the way over here, and he's saying, "We're gonna make you pay extra money, but you're all the way over here."
Back then, we had a ruler that was really removed from everything, Insha.
I'd like to elaborate on what Abigail said.
Okay.
It's like if I'm standing over here, and Sajia is standing way over there, or if I'm in Rosemead School, and she's over here, and I'm saying, "Sajia, give me your money," but she can't, because she's like way over here.
Yeah, that doesn't work very well. Good analogy. All right, our next primary source today, ladies and gentlemen, is going to be the actual Declaration of Independence, okay? Now, what you're gonna have at your tables today are two different components, and you're going to analyze these as a primary document, okay? So when you go get your analysis sheet, yes, this is a picture of the Declaration, but we're gonna use it as a document, Insha, because this is the way we're gonna do it. This is a picture of a completed version of the Declaration of Independence. You can get the date, you can get people, but instead of this block here that you can't read, you are going to use a paraphrase instead.
Well, what I think, it's asking, it's asking you three things the author said that are important. What I think what he meant is that everybody has equal rights. It's not that the king can just be born with power, and the king can rule whoever he wants like 3,000 miles away from him.
I agree with you, Zion, because like a king, like kings, like sometimes, some loyalists, you want their king to rule over like 3,000 miles of land, and the patriots don't want it, and they want to govern themselves.
Exactly, and this, the Declaration of Independence was mostly written for the patriots, because it was their way of expressing how they felt. They, they wrote, all, like in summary, it says, "All men are created equal, all men have the same rights. All men should have freedom, everybody should have, everybody should have freedom."
I feel the same way, because actually, when, actually, the patriots really got like anger, anger from the intolerable acts.
Yes, and snapback and the T-S.
Yeah, and all the other acts.
So, in the Declaration of Independence, it talks about like how far away he was, and...
They were doing it every day to some point.
It's sort of, I can sort of understand it, because we live in Texas, and the president is in Washington, D.C., but I don't think that it's 3,000 miles away, right?
And still, even if he was there at this time, he could fly a plane over here.
Yeah, but he was in a different continent even.
Some evidence I know why the document was written, because there's obviously, there's, um, there's bulletins, where it's, he's, Thomas Jefferson is, well, he's complaining, he's doing all, all the rules that the king has savagely gave them.
He doesn't want to follow the rules.
Well, it's not that he doesn't want to follow the rules, because I disagree, he, he wants different rules, or he just wants independence. He went to, he was in England, and then they left England to go to a new land, a new world, basically, shuttle over again, which that means they wanted to get away from where they came from.
Not to, not to go back again to...
So, they're trying to make a new government. They, they still love England, they, they're still British.
Who is the author? What did we find? Now, this wasn't really on there, you want to think about this, infer this from our past stuff. Abigail?
Thomas Jefferson.
Thomas Jefferson. And what was the title of this, of course, Ben?
Declaration.
Declaration of Independence. Audience, Megan listed whom?
King George.
Right. Now, what are three things that you think are important? What did you get from the document?
Social studies matters. Social studies is the glue of education. We read, we write, we do math, we even do a little science in social studies. In fact, we do more than that. We analyze, we infer, we investigate, and better yet, we grow citizens. What other content area can claim their primary purpose is to help young people make informed and reasoned decisions for the public good, as citizens of a culturally diverse, democratic society in an interdependent world? It takes a village of creative, data-informed teachers, a well-designed and well-aligned curriculum, and committed administrators who champion the cause of social studies, to guide the kindergartner whose hand slips out of yours on the first day of school, to become the self-sufficient senior ready to meet 21st century challenges. Social studies matters.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. We would entertain any questions that the board members might have. Mr. Stewart, you gotta have a question, we're counting on you. It is social studies, we're counting on you to have a question here.
I thought that your incorporation of the ERG data was terrific.
It was very timely.
But you used an expression I have never heard before, and I'm very anxious to know what it means. What does it mean to think like a historian?
That is a great question. To think like a historian means that when you read a text, a primary document, you realize that there are multiple perspectives. I had a group of teachers gathered together just a few days ago, and 5th grade teachers, actually, and I put the question, posed the question, what is the difference between history and the past? The past is things that have happened, but history are interpretations of those events. There can be multiple perspectives from those, I mean, about that event, and being able to teach students, kids, to think like an historian, means that they can entertain multiple perspectives and understand that there are different ways to look at history and to look at events.
Insha, mean different ways to look at the past.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments? That was very interesting.
I was very interested in how he used the group activities for analyzing the document. Are all of the social study teachers getting that same kind of training? Because we know that the small group interaction produces a lot more knowledge and a lot more participation by the, by all students, instead of the student that just sits there and doesn't participate. Are all of our teachers trained in that manner?
In 4th and 5th grade, this, this year, in fact, the training I just referred to was for 5th grade. Susan Kelly in Language Arts and I are integrating social studies into the Language Arts curriculum, and we're, we just did a training on, they're called mini-cues, that the document, it's a document-based question, just like you would have on the AP test, and we are, they're called mini-cues, because they are slightly, slightly easier, more accessible for 4th and 5th, 6th grade students. And that's exactly the kind of training that we have been giving them. Less so in K-3, but there are certainly, as we planned our curriculum, we've designed opportunities for them to work together and think together like this. But with the documents specifically, it's in 4th and 5th, 7th and 8th specifically, because it's history as opposed to, say, World Geography, and then also 10th and 11th.
Well, I'm more concerned about new teachers, because I know that's very intimidating to start out with, well, just the noise in the room alone, and then the interaction, and then getting it, getting it started so that all children in that circle participate. So, I'm concerned about whether they're getting training in that. I know they're not getting it in college, so I'm concerned that they're getting it in their staff development.
I'm very delighted, because this coming year, we'll be having, I'll be able to have an elementary...
Pierre, I don't want to interrupt, but none of our home audience can hear a word you're saying, if you don't speak into a microphone.
I will stop moving. All right. I am delighted to, to share this news with you, that this coming year, elementary and I will have a specialist for elementary and middle school that will allow the opportunity for that person to work with our elementary teachers and, and help them understand exactly what it means to have group work and to have, you know, thinking about documents, et cetera. So, there's much more opportunity than there was even this past year. Thank you.
And, and I think Ms. Larson needs a, a special accolade. She has been working by herself and doing this heavy lifting, and is the, absolutely. But as you know, and the board directs us, is put our resources where we can make the most academic achievement, and we know that we're in a pretty elite group of contenders for that ERG number one spot, and so we feel... And so, we feel like we need to continue to use the resources we have to ensure all of our academic areas are strong. And so, we're going to give Ms. Larson some extra assistance this year if we can make that happen as well. But she has done a tremendous amount of work by herself the last few years, so.
Well, really, I need to give credit to the social studies teachers and there are several out in the audience, and they are marvelous and wonderful.
Yeah, social studies teachers, please stand, we'll give you a hand.
I'd just like to add, I've, I've known Pierre for quite some time. I've seen her, I've had the honor and pleasure of seeing her work in the classroom as a teacher, and I can say honestly from my heart that you're one of the finest educators I've ever been around. But the thing I appreciate most is your passion for your social, for your subject matter. And I know that that passion rubs off on, on the people in, in social studies and our , in the entire district, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I was also going to mention that one of the things that Dr. Burns will let the board members do is accompany him when he goes on campus visits. And I did that a couple of times last year, and I got to see these things, I can't remember the terminology for.
Turn and talk?
Turn and talk. But particularly with not having an education teaching background, as an engineer, it helps me to be able to see what the new methods are and how they're actually working in the classroom. And it really is just random rooms you hit, they don't quite have an alarm running of which hallway he's in at the time. And you really get to see like what you showed in Mr. Songson's room, and you get to see how the kids interact and they, I think they've been told to ignore the strange adults in the room, but I would encourage the board members to do that if they can. Thank you, Ms. Larson, thank you, Dr. Burns. Before, before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind the audience that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so during the agenda item 4A, Audience for Guests. Ms. Grivner, do we have any Audience for Guests forms?
No ma'am, we don't.
So, do we have anybody interested in doing Audience for Guests? If not, I may not read the rest of this. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number four, Board Operations and 4A, Audience for Guests. So, 4 is Board Operations, 4A is Audience for Guests. We do not appear to have any forms, so we will keep on moving on. Item 4B is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed, or Mr. Hyatt, from the Consent Agenda at this time? Mr. Shore?
Yes, and number 29 be removed.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Mr. Hyatt?
Ms. Chaffin, Ms. Klein, item 13.
Okay. Board members, are there any other items to be removed at this time? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Shore?
Move that with the exception of two items that have been removed, that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second? Ms. Watten, thank you for your second. All those in favor of these items? All those opposed? That is unanimous, Ms. Grivner. Okay, item number 13, Mr. Hyatt?
Yes, ma'am, Klein, we'd just like to remove that for, to reconsider it at a later date.
Okay. So then, that brings us to item number 29, Mr. Shore?
To my understanding, Mr. Hyatt, that this deals with determining that we don't need some portable buildings anymore.
Yes, sir, it's not only that, we don't need them and they've reached a certain level of useful life that being in our best interest is to go ahead and dispose of them.
It's my further understanding that sometime in the past, some people, in their view of history, would contend that we had previously disposed of some portable buildings.
That's correct.
And in fact, that's historically accurate, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. If that's the case, if we have some portable buildings that we're not using, and if the law allows it, which I believe it does.
It does.
There was a situation in West not too long ago where they may have a need of those facilities. If they have a need and we don't have them, to the extent that we can get those to them, I think everybody in this audience would be strongly in favor of that.
Mr. Shore, you have to do a little bit of research, but you are correct, and there's special provisions at school districts, a school district can dispose, it's not really disposition, we can transfer ownership of, of, of school district assets from one district to another, and it's a, it's a equal provision. The state considers it not a, a loss of assets, it's just moving it from one school district to another. And with the superintendent's direction, we'll be happy to investigate whether or not this, that West could take, make use of any available buildings we have.
Okay, that, that would really not be these particular buildings in 29, but similar buildings.
Any, it would, any, any buildings that the board has previously declared surplus that we haven't yet disposed of?
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Madam President, I've got a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Yes, please.
Move that we approve item 29, Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Chaffin, thank you for your second. I have a motion for Mr. Shore and a second for Ms. Chaffin. All of those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? With a vote of seven in favor and none opposed, the motion carries. So, ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item involves a recommendation for Dr. Burns for high school principal. Dr. Burns, what is your recommendation?
Ms. Klein, members of the board, as you know, at the last meeting, we made two recommendations that you approved, and so, as you're well aware of the domino effect, and when those positions are filled internally, we create some more positions. And so, we're here tonight to offer a recommendation to replace a high school principal, and the assignment will be at Aral Turner High School. And our recommendation to you is Ms. Brooke Purcelli, who is currently the principal at DeWitt Perry Middle School. And Ms. Purcelli is another grown in the district from beginning for 18 years total and 12 years in administration, previous three at DeWitt Perry Middle School. Ms. Purcelli, I'm sorry, please stand, thank you. So, our, our recommendation, Ms. Brooke Purcelli.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, is there a motion? Mr. Matthews?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Burns, members of, fellow members of the board, it is indeed my pleasure and honor to make a motion that we approve Dr. Burns' recommendation for Brooke Purcelli to assume the principalship at Aral Turner High School.
Do I have a second, Ms. Watten?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Watten. So, we have a motion for Mr. Matthews, a second for Ms. Watten. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Purcelli.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, and as you know, that creates another opening. So, we will be working diligently in the next few weeks to have that recommendation to you at the June meeting so that, you know, the campuses can proceed with their summer planning. And so, we're working obviously fast and fierce to get that done, but we are honored and certainly proud of all of our CFP employees and their work, and, and we're being able to promote from within speaks a lot for the instructional program and the culture of this school district. So, we are, we are honored to be able to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Agenda item 4D is Report on 2013-14 Budget. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein, members of the board. Mr. Hyatt and Ms. Tillman have prepared some information for you tonight. This is the report piece before there is some action that will ask from you, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Hyatt to kind of give some context to this.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. There's not a lot of new global information. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of action in Austin, that's not fair. There's a lot of action in Austin, I'm just not sure there's a lot of results that are going to affect us a whole lot. So, we're not seeing, we're not seeing much impact out of Austin. So, we're preparing to go forward with the budget as we previously presented to you. Ms. Tillman will update you on some of that information and incorporate into that some of the compensation items that we've previously discussed, and we'll show the impact of those compensation items, describe them a little bit, and as Dr. Burns indicated, the next two items after this will allow you the opportunity to consider those compensations items, compensation items. So, Ms. Tillman, if you will.
Thank you. To kick this presentation off, we would also like to start with a quote from Dr. Seuss. "So be sure when you step, step with care and great tact, and remember that life's a great balancing act. Our budget is a series of decisions that are very important and align with our district priorities. Those decisions have to be balanced with our available resources and the stability of our district financially. So, this evening, we will be asking you to make decisions related to our budget in terms of compensation moving forward into the 13-14 school year. As Mr. Hyatt mentioned, there has been some activity in Austin, and we wanted to provide you just some brief information that's available. Terms of the appropriation bills, we have the Senate's version that would put an additional 1.375 billion into the formulas for school districts. We also have the House version that would put 2.5 billion in to the system. Those are also in committee right now, conference committee. Also, we have a supplemental appropriation bill for 1213 only, where they have proposed an additional $500 million to come through in funding with the maximum being on a per wada basis. However, there has some, been some challenges to that where they're trying to come up with another way to allocate it rather than on a per wada basis, so that they can provide money to districts that are below average in funding, more than those that are above average. And then, as late as April, we had Senate Joint Resolution 1, which would put 800 million more dollars into the system, 500 of it through our formula funding, and 300 million coming back through the date program. This was done through the use, proposed use of Rainy Day Fund, which it still would require 2/3 vote from the House, along with voter approval in November. At the same meeting, the Senate also proposed adding an additional 1.4 billion to what they had originally came up with in the appropriation bill. And then also today, there was an additional bill out potentially that would require school districts beginning in 1415 who do not contribute to Social Security to pay 1.5% into TRS. For us, that would actually result in us, after, if any of these were to go through, that could offset that for us. So, we're watching that one closely as well. It's the same bill that's proposing changing the retirement age and putting some penalties in place, and also raising the COLA for certain retirees. So, that's, it's all part of that one bill. All that to say that there is still a lot undecided at this point, and we, but we still have to move forward based on the information we have available to date. So, the assumptions that we've made with the 1314 budget that we're working with right now, in terms of state funding, we are leaving it fairly flat with just a small increase from potential formula changes. We're also projecting a basic flat enrollment with less than a 1% growth. On our tax revenues, we're also leaving that flat to slightly up. Our expenditures for departments and campuses, they're receiving the same amount that they received in the 1213 school year. Our pay adjustments, we will discuss in detail what we're proposing for compensation adjustments, and we are making minimal staffing adjustments largely related to shifts in enrollment. We also have a few other areas that have had significant changes from this year, including our transportation costs as well as our TIF payment. When we discussed compensation in December with the board, there were three priorities that were identified, including maintaining our longevity pay as well as enhancing it if possible, remaining competitive in our market, and also establishing a district-wide collective performance pay system. We did do an unofficial survey of the area to try to determine what other districts were proposing in terms of a pay adjustment for the 1314 school year. These are the results. Tasby also issued a quick poll that they did last year and this year, and they received responses from 437 districts. Of those districts, 79% are expecting to give some form of a pay increase next year. Districts of our size are proposing anywhere between 1% to 3%, which also aligned with the information that we obtained locally. So, given what we believe is happening in the market along with the resources we believe are available and board identified priorities, we're proposing that we continue our longevity pay plan as it currently stands, where we will add an additional $500 payment to those employees that are at their 20-year anniversary or above to the already $100 per year that they would receive in their anniversary year. We're also proposing a 2.5% pay increase. This would allow us to increase our beginning teacher pay to 47,100. And the last piece would be to implement a 2013-14 collective performance pay plan system. This would include paying all those employees who worked for the district in the 2011-12 school year prior to February 1, 2012, maintained employment through the 2012-13 school year, the current school year, and then continued on into the next school year for 2013-14 and remain employed at the time that we issued this payment. We would pay $500 as a one-time payment based upon our 2011-12 ERG results, ranking in the top 5%. The estimated cost would be 4.8 million. This number is on the high end because we did use the assumption that all of our current employees would receive that and they would not all be eligible, but we use this number just as a starting point. So, based upon the information we just gave you, looking at our 2012-13 estimate, we're currently at a $4.1 million deficit. Since the last time we looked at this, we've had two things work in our favor. One, we received just under 900,000 in additional funding from the state that was for prior year audits on our property value. And we also made our TIF payment, and it came in a little over half a million under budget. The problem with that is that some of that then gets rolled forward into the next year because it's based upon unpaid taxes. So, you do see an increase in next year that is a part of that along with value increases. In 1314, right now, just in draft form, it will change, we're looking at a 12.9 million, 12.2 million deficit. Mr. Hyatt only fell out of his chair twice when I showed him these numbers the first time, but he's recovered now. We do believe we'll bring this number down as we go forward into June, and we continue to work on completing our staffing and working with any of the potential compensation adjustments. Just looking in terms of where our funds come from, approximately 72% is local, largely taxes, 27% state. On our expenditures, 77% payroll, again, this is general fund only. When you remove our TIF, utilities and transportation, that then lends 10% in other areas. Our fund balance at the end of our prior fiscal year was 82.5 million with our current projected deficit. This would bring us to four, bring it down 4.1 million to 78.3, which would be approximately 148 days. Going forward, if we went forward with the little over $12 million deficit, you can see going into the 2014, 15 ending fiscal year, we would be at 98 days, which would of course be a point that would be of concern, that we would be looking at making adjustments if nothing has changed in our funding system. Either through...
Can I have a second?
Sure.
The, I'm understanding that if we do the budget for 1314, as has been displayed on the screen.
Yes.
That in 2014, we'd still have 120 days in the fund balance.
Yes.
Okay. What assumptions should this body be making for that graph to be accurate going down to 2018 in only 31 days? What assumptions should we, what assumptions are built into that?
Well, it assumes that we continue with the 12.2 million deficit each year. Well, it assumes that we continue with the $12.2 million deficit each year. It doesn't have any raises built in beyond 13-14, but it does assume that worst-case scenario going forward.
So that's a $12 million deficit budget.
Each year.
Each year.
Yes, sir. So this evening, we are going to ask the board to consider making decisions related to our compensation plan for 13-14. We will continue to evaluate our budget and provide a final update in June. We'll schedule our next budget meeting that will be for the actual adoption of the tax rate and budget, and then we will hold those meetings in August and adopt the budget.
If you will, before you make comments, the next two items will specifically discuss those elements of our compensation, so if you'd like to hold specific compensation questions till we get to those items, that might be appropriate.
Mr. Shore.
This is a two-part question. In one of the first slides, where we are projecting that expenditures and budget allocation for the campuses remain the same. Were there any great, but more importantly, warranted complaints from any of the campuses that that which was necessary to achieve our goal of high achievement for all students could not be attained because the campus wasn't receiving adequate money?
Ms. Tillman, would you like me to address that? Because, Mr. Shore, you make a great question, and as you know, with the direction the board's given us is you want our resources to go toward academic achievement. So with the educational services overseeing those campus requests, they are helping them, as well as the district perspective, decide where we need to put those resources to gain the most achievement. So to answer your question, yes, but it will be done collectively with the guidance of educational resources, educational services help with each campus.
Okay. Here's what I just heard. Yes, there was some angst, but whether that angst was warranted or not was mitigated as much as possible.
Absolutely.
Can I add to that, that we also had a process where campus, all campus principals and/or department directors, if they felt like their allocation wasn't adequate, they could submit a request for additional funds, and they had to provide documentation of why they needed those funds and how the services were going to be impacted if they did not receive those funds. And all of that paperwork was then submitted to the Instructional Services Department, and they could make a determination to allocate additional funds that was in their budget to these campuses, and they have done that.
I'd be stunned if you can answer the following question tonight. How many principals submitted those requests?
Probably less than 20.
Yes.
Well, that's about half, that's a little less than half the campuses.
Actually, more than half. Yeah, we have 39 campus principals.
I'm impressed the principals did that. I'm glad that they're doing that. Good.
There's some in the audience.
They're not bashful very often.
They're doing that.
They're not bashful, absolutely.
Okay.
And that's why they come to this, to see how much money we got in there, see.
Not much. Okay.
Mr. Shore.
When you put up the slide with the informal screening of what other districts are doing.
Yes.
I saw one district that, I think, passed a 2.5%. HEB passed a 2%, Little Elm 2.5, Richardson is a 2% proposed.
Frisco's 3, and so is Coppel 3.
Okay. My question is, how do we compare with Richardson's salary structure?
You can answer that.
And then I'm going to follow up with, how does the proposed beginning salary compare with Richardson's beginning salary?
You picked a unique player. Richardson has taken a different approach. Frankly, our compensation structure and beginning salaries is above Richardson's. Currently and proposed.
Okay. I presume that if we concur with a 2.5% increase, and they pass a 2%, then we're going to stay above them.
We should, you know.
What do you mean we should? What kind of history are you talking about?
The history of school districts having a bad tendency of making up stuff before they pass their budgets and not telling us.
I'm just closing.
There's some friendly competition going on, and not everybody wants everybody else to know what they're going to pay. So while this is a legitimate unofficial survey, it's based on their current opinion of what might pass.
Okay, but we are, currently, our salary structure and the beginning salary pays higher than they do.
Yes, sir.
My other questions relate more to the following items. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's ask you, Ms. Tillman, if you could go to the next slide. My question is, on the first bullet, the $500 payment to longevity for receiving 20 years, that's only on the five-year anniversaries?
Yes.
Not every year?
That is, and it's.
Okay. So just for the employees receiving the longevity pay for greater than 20?
Yeah. Ms. Klein, that's a good point, because you remember back to the work study, the dialogue and the direction we got from the board was, and the feedback from the staff is that longevity is something that they value, they appreciate, it's what we want to build in the culture that we get you here, we train you here, we keep you here. And that's why we think it helps achievement, and so we added a little spice to that because we have a lot invested in those people that have been with us 20 years, a lot invested. And so we want to keep them with us, so.
Can I challenge that statement?
Sure.
I'm challenging it because the person who's here 20 years isn't going anywhere.
We don't want them to either.
Yeah, but they're not going. I mean, they're here for 20 years, they're not going anywhere. Okay, I give up.
I might argue with Mr. Shore. I'll argue later.
And we'll let you give up, that'll be fine.
I think it just shows additional appreciation.
I don't disagree with that statement.
Having been there for 20 years in the classroom.
That statement is 100% accurate.
So, Mr. Hyatt, the fourth bullet, we're going to discuss more later?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions on this item? Do we want to roll on to the next one, which would be?
Yes, ma'am.
E, consider all matters related to the budget, including proposed compensation adjustments.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, Mr. Hyatt has some information for you to consider here.
This is relatively straightforward. Tanya, just go ahead, and this is the basic compensation adjustment.
Based upon our board-identified compensation priorities, we're asking the board to consider authorizing a 2.5% pay increase for the 2013-14 school year.
And if I can add to the little context to that for the audience and the board, is that, you know, historically, in times we've been in August before we identified for our employees what their raise might be, we don't think that's a good practice when you're competing with the districts around us, and so we feel like when we're having the ability and with our resources to offer compensation proposal to you, that approval early in the process is in our best interest as a district, as well as we think it's a good thing for our employees. So that's why we're asking you to do that tonight.
I might add just a little more context. I appreciate that, Dr. Burns. The process of the conversion of the pay system, if you will, if we wait until the time we finalize our budget in August, once teachers are already coming back to school, in the past, we've waited until that very last minute, to the end of the fiscal year, and by doing that, oftentimes, we can't even process the raise for the time for their first paycheck into the year. And while they'll eventually get their check, sometimes it's a month, or even it has historically been a couple of times, two months into the school year, that we have to retroactively pay them back to the beginning. That's frustrating to the employees, and frankly, duplicates work for our payroll staff. By doing it early at this time, it allows our payroll staff to process that ahead of time, so when they roll into their new year, that's just automatically rolled into their compensation, the employees get their raise at the first month of the new contract year, and it's done at a much more timely level, timely basis for our payroll staff, so they don't have to do an inordinate amount of retroactively correcting paychecks.
Mr. Shore.
This is a tricked question, but I know it's a trick question because we don't understand, wrong, we don't know what we're going to have for revenue. So because we don't know what we're going to have for revenue, this is a trick question. What do we think HEB and Richardson could do, given their fund balances?
I don't know.
And I respect you for that, okay? Do we think that they could exceed, not could they, would they exceed 2.5%?
I'm virtually certain Richardson wouldn't, HEB might.
Okay, now.
HEB, how are we?
I want to talk about the slide that had the ski slope at the end with 2018, and Mark's hair had fallen out, and it's white, and he's having a heart attack and having to take nitroglycerine pills, okay? If we, if we do what's being recommended now, but we don't increase any compensation next year, knowing that we don't know what we're going to have for revenue, so this makes us all speculative conjecture. That's a good phrase. That's a hell of a phrase, okay? What do you think the fund balance would look like next year? And for Dr. Burns, what would be the expectation regarding recruiting new teachers next year if there's no increase in compensation next year? So one for you and one for you.
Okay.
If you're asking, what would the fund balance look like next year if we didn't?
Yeah, in other words, I don't like that ski slope. Ski slope referring to?
If?
At a $12 million deficit each year, I don't want you to lose your hair.
Tanya mentioned it, and it probably went past, because she and I, Dr. Burns loves the phrase "the curse of knowledge," it's an item that she and I talk about regularly, and she did mention it. That ski slope has become built in structurally once we pass this budget. If you adopt the compensation model and the budget that Tanya presented to you, you have bought the ski slope.
No, that's not correct, because we don't know about revenue.
Assuming the state doesn't make any significant changes from now?
Assuming no increase in revenue, the ski slope, unless we vote to decrease compensation.
Right. Assuming no change in revenue, you have bought the ski slope. The only, in my opinion, the only realistic probability of changing revenue would be a local tax election.
Okay. If compensation is flat next year, how does the general manager of the club feel about hiring new players?
Getting any new free agents?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Shore, that's obviously another question that we wish we had a crystal ball, we can see what that's going to look like. You know, it's relative. It's going to depend on what everybody else is doing. It's kind of what we've seen in our analysis that we did, the compensation thing, is that, you know, as the, as the districts move with their pay, is where you've told us to try to stay competitive. So to answer that question would mean, do they move?
Okay.
Does it put us at a disadvantage? And it might. It puts us at a disadvantage. However, what is probably true out there is they're all kind of in the same situation we're in, so their ability to move is all, is very similar to ours. So we don't see any way that they're going to be able to make a big jump in that, with the exception, and Mr. Hyatt just pointed to it, is Richardson and H&amp;B have not gone for their extra 13 cents, okay? So they could have a local tax election and increase their budgets by 13 cents, then they would have the ability to outpace us significantly if we did not. So that, I hope that answered your question, but that's all of the variables that are in that.
Okay, I have one more question, and then I'll stop with my question. Would the, would it be more beneficial in terms of next year's recruiting class if this year's, if the board determines that a 2% increase is appropriate, and then a 1/2% increase next year?
Well, I'm just going to give you my spin. I think, I'd rather operate on this year in the knowledge we know, I would rather not try to speculate next year whether or not that's a good thing or not. I think 2.5 for our people this year is the right thing to do, with the past couple of years' wages, being where they've been, one year no raise, and the next year only a slight increase. So my recommendation would be, we'd stay with the 2.5%, and then, obviously, we'll see what happens with the rest of the figures.
Okay, I have another question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Aren't our people going to get tagged with an increase in insurance premium?
Yes, sir. And that is another reason why I would say that too.
To the tune of about how much?
Again, Tanya and I had this conversation, and it varies depending on the coverage you select. Most predominantly, it varies on whether or not you're covering a family versus your employee only.
It's going to range from what to what?
It was zero for employee only, all the way up to 30-something percent on some, of the premium, not their.
A 30% increase in the premium.
The premium, yeah.
Right. But it's, it's all over the place, depending on what plan you're on.
So if we don't increase somebody's compensation, and they have somebody covered besides themselves, their paycheck is going to be smaller.
That's absolutely correct.
Much.
Which is, you just gave myself another reason why I want to do it now, so.
And that's a very good reason. Part of that TSB survey that Tanya mentioned, they also surveyed districts about how they're going to, how they're proposing to address that relatively significant increase in insurance costs. I think the answer was in the mid-60% of the districts they surveyed are doing the same thing that we're doing, and that is, the employee is going to be responsible for all of that increase in health premium costs. What we, what we are suggesting we do is, rather than adjust our, how we handle insurance, try to address that by providing a better compensation package so they can afford that insurance.
So you're not going to be coming back with, and by the way, the district needs to pick up a portion of the increase.
My recommendation is to not do that, and I believe that's our current plan.
Ms. Horton?
Mr. Fleming has.
I got a question. If we, go ahead with the raise, not knowing what the legislature's going to do, it could force our hand next year to, for a rollback election, am I correct?
We got plenty of days' coverage.
The projected fund balance, the projected fund balance graph that Tanya indicated is kind of that warning sign of when it would force your hand, and force is subjective. What is your pain threshold? I recall a board work session where we identified pain thresholds in fund balance, and different board members have different pain thresholds. The 90-day threshold hits us in about 2015, I think, Tanya. You know, there, that gives us a little bit of a window. And, you know, next year really wouldn't be crisis if we tightened our belts a little bit, didn't give a raise, if the legislature doesn't help us, but you can see that that threshold is approaching, no matter which of your pain thresholds you choose.
Could I ask how this budget affects our hiring of new teachers? Because I know that we had 1,000 interested people at the job fair, but we also had to ask for quite a few waivers this year, and I know of classes that are sitting with 28 children, especially in kindergarten, with no help at all, no aides. And so I'm wondering how this budget will affect our hiring so that we don't have to ask for waivers for, especially, you know, I understand that, you know, when you have 23 or 24 in one class, that that's very difficult, but when you have a kindergarten class with 28 children, that's a lot of children, a lot of five-year-olds. And I don't know how many that affects across the district, and I don't even know how many waivers we asked for, I can't remember. It seems like we asked for, was it 17?
60-something training waivers?
I think 62. I don't know why that number rings.
62.
Something like that.
All right. Ms. Horton, our.
Were they mostly at elementary level?
Yeah, they would be elementary because of the K, K4, 22.
Oh, the 22 level, yeah, that's right. So my question is how this budget affects our hiring. So, my question is how this budget affects our hiring teachers, so that we don't have a teacher sitting with 28 children in her classroom?
Well, I'll let Mr. Hyatt take the formula stab at it, but the answer to that is that that's, us having the ability to do waivers is why we've been able to manage this shortfall in revenue the past couple of years from the state. When they cut our legs out from under, so to speak, the only thing that we could do was increase class size and ask for those waivers. Our current existing formula is we're trying to keep those at a minimum, and we're trying to keep that size as much as we can down, but it is inevitable that we will have to ask for some more waivers.
Yes, sir.
In our, in our current projection, the way we've done it.
You're spot on, Dr. Burns. I believe with our increase in our new hire schedule, that's one of the fundamental reasons we think the raise is important. If we don't give a raise of somewhere in the two and a half percent range, it's difficult to hire, to raise that new hire schedule. It just, structurally, you can't, you can't raise a new hire schedule if you don't raise an existing employee's schedule. So, so that will help our ability to hire, but the waiver issue and class size issues really isn't our ability to hire. We, we can probably hire enough teachers. The choice we've made, and it's, it's a difficult choice, but the choice we've made is to allow the class sizes to grow over 22, and, and we don't have very many that are, that are at the elementary level in the waivers that are that size. Tracy, do you remember?
That's correct. I know that anyone who came to me saying that there was an issue, and they would come and explain what the issue was, we'd go walk the building, we were able to help with either a classroom assistant, an additional teacher. So, if they came to us saying they had a hardship, we were able to take care of it this year.
But the waivers that we applied for and utilized this year actually reduced our costs by close to $4 million. If we elected not to utilize waivers again next year, that $12 million just goes to 16.
Well, I have no problem with waivers, I just have a problem with 28 kindergarteners, and, and without an aide.
Right. I don't believe we have anything over 25.
Yes, we do.
Without, without an additional assistant? I'll investigate.
Yes, without any, without an aide, yes.
Yeah, Ms. Wharton, and that is what, you know, we have an incredible amount of, of confidence and trust in our campus principals, and so, when they yell "uncle," you know, and the teachers do, as Ms. Smith said, we come out and we're trying to find a way to do that within this really uncomfortable era we're living at in funding public schools the way they should be funded. And so, you know, everybody's making some sacrifices. Unfortunately, you know, I don't think the state considered that when they cut the amount of money they cut from us in all districts in the past couple of years, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Board members, any other comments or discussion?
You will make it.
Mr. Shore?
I'll make the motion.
Can I just say something funny? I'm waiting for your speculative conjecture.
You know, that is a fantastic phrase. How can I start using that?
It's like three-peat.
I'm going to trademark that. I move that we approve the recommended increase in compensation, and if Mark's hair turns white, I don't know if I'll enjoy that or not.
Don't put that part of the recommended motion. Just give him a motion.
I move that we approve the staff's recommendation for an increase in compensation of 2.5% across the board.
That's second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shore, a second by Mr. Matthews. All those...
Aren't we looking to approve E?
After.
As the...
That is E.
That is E.
But it doesn't say anything about the, I mean, but it's very specific.
You're going to do the other one.
I believe "all matters" means "all matters," don't you?
And F.
Well, F is something different. So, we have a motion by Mr. Shore, a second by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? That motion is seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
I think, you know, our ERG data does affect the way the board responds to these staff recommendations, and there has been definite positive movement towards higher achievement for all students, and we know how hard everybody is working. I know I couldn't be a kindergarten teacher with 25 children in a room, so...
It is tough.
But I know Ms. Wharton did a lot of work for years, and...
Well, before we had the 22, we lived with it, but...
But, thank you, Dr. Burns. So, now we're at Agenda Item F, consider all matters related to one-time supplemental payments for the 2013-14 school year, including the adoption of a board resolution authorizing such payments in 2013-14.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, as you know, we always want to be technically correct, and that's why we have our, our attorneys look at things that may be outside the norm in terms of compensation. We think we are presenting to you tonight a really unique thing, that we don't know that anybody else is doing it in terms of rewarding team performance, when the team is successful providing that, that extra reward for that. And so, we obviously had our attorneys look at this, and they, attorneys always have suggestions. I don't know what it is, but every time you ask them, they're going to have a suggestion and an opinion, and they did, and so, we're here to...
Hopefully, it's a good one.
So, we're here to not to tell you that suggestion, and then ask your approval. So, Mr. Hyatt, I'll, I'll let you add anything to that you, you need to, so.
Yeah, I was just stressing, because I'm, I'm doing the current attorney account in the, in the, in the room tonight, and it's bothering me, but...
Not enough?
Do what?
Not enough?
Something about a bus and a cliff, but I don't know. There's a, is, is, as Ms. Tillman mentioned in the budget presentation, we have a structure of a one-time pay, and we incorporated this in one resolution that includes the longevity and the one-time pay, but it's a little bit detailed, and it, it's interestingly complicated when you try to package this up, but I will submit to you that what we're trying to achieve here is to address the board's interest at the board work session earlier about rewarding effort and rewarding achievement in the district. But in that reward, I think something is critically important to recognize, and that is the effect that has on the culture of the school district. This is a school district that's unique in its makeup, because we're a, a school district of normal, average people. My neighborhood's just pretty, pretty normal, middle America, and everybody on this board's neighborhood's pretty normal, middle America. What isn't, what is unusual in this school district is the unusual achievement of the students in that normal, middle American neighborhood. And what drives that to a degree isn't the actual dollars that each teacher makes or every administrator makes. What drives that is a culture of, we can do better, and we should do better, and we will do better. And what part of this recommendation that we bring to you tonight is doing is recognizing that at least there's a little bit of payment that notices that we think we should be better, and we are better. And I'd like to throw my two cents in before we get started. If we can do something to enhance the culture of this school district, so that we collectively all believe in that, so that people around us can believe in that, I believe that'll affect what our kids do in the classroom. That's my soapbox for the night, and I'll throw it to Tanya over to talk to, to talk about the details.
The actual resolution is found on page 294 of your board book. Exhibit A and B provide the details of who's eligible for each supplemental payment. Exhibit A outlines the guidelines for the supplemental payment for collective performance, which includes requiring that the employee be employed prior to February 1, 2012, remain employed through 12/13, come back in 13/14, and still remain employed at the time we make the payment, which we're estimating will be sometime in October, or as soon thereafter as practicable. Exhibit B provides the guidelines for the longevity pay, which include what we have been doing, which is $100 of each year of service at each five-year anniversary point, and we're proposing adding that each eligible employee with 20 years or more of employment with the district receive an additional $500 payment. We have had proposed adjustment to the language, and I'm going to give you a copy on Exhibit A of modified wording.
Yes, she's passing that out. I'll just let you know that such a suggestion is just to clarify that employee, the language that said employee, to be eligible employees had to be employed, couldn't be employed after the date that's identified. It wasn't clear in that, that it meant actually hired on that date, so if you were an existing employee, it was, could have been considered that no one was eligible, so if anybody was working, you weren't eligible. So, we made a slight modification of that language to hopefully clarify that if you're working here and met the previous date threshold, then you're eligible.
Yeah, we didn't feel it would be a very good plan if you did it and then nobody was eligible, so. So, I thought we thought this was better.
We'd look good. No. Yes, we would, because it's not our fault, nobody qualified.
Yeah, as a matter of full disclosure, one thing, you know, want to be clear, if you look at those timelines, the, the date thresholds, the, the people that are eligible for this one-time achievement recognition will be people that had been employed a substantial portion of the year that the ERG data is relevant to. So, people that have hired, were hired after February of 2012 wouldn't be eligible. Now, that's, that's, that's on purpose, and we know that that's going to cause some issues, because there'll, there'll be a portion of our employees that have been here for a year that wouldn't be eligible. But if we're recognizing that achievement, that the ERG data is representing, that we just received, that's how we identify it. Employees had to be working over half of the year that that data was, was reflecting to be eligible.
Ms. Try, I would add that, though. They will be eligible the next year, when we reach that goal again, so.
That goes back to that concept of culture. We all recognize that we're working toward that goal of success, and all of those people that weren't eligible for the last, last data, that means that encourages them to get with the program, because now you're new here with us, and you're going to be eligible next go-round.
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Shore.
Who or what is a full-time TRS-eligible employee?
That is basically someone who's working more than half-time in a position based upon the hours required for that position.
Is a full-time cafeteria worker a TRS-eligible employee?
Yes, sir.
Yes. They're, they're full-time, even though their hours are a little different. They're considered full-time, and they're paying in a TRS, and they'll be eligible.
The, the individual who mops the floor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's essentially anybody who's eligible for a TRS pension, should they reach...
Paying into the system, right.
They're paying into the system.
Full-time.
So, that, that's essentially everybody that is a district employee.
Yeah, with the exception of those who would be part-time and not paying into the system, they would be eligible.
Okay, because I'm not looking to set up friction where some employee would be jealous.
Right.
Because they're here full-time, but, but what, my concern is not warranted, is what I'm hearing.
I believe, and the intent is, we're excluding employees that are intermittent, part-time, and, and be real, again, full-disclosure guy, substitute teachers. I mean, if they're, if they are just intermittent, part-time employees, they're not eligible, then they wouldn't receive this.
Tanya, have you included in your projections for next year's budget Resolution A being approved?
Yes.
Okay. What percent, or what amount of the $12.3 million dip into the fund balance would Resolution A amount to?
It is approximately 1.5 million, I believe, and that is on the high end, because that assumes 100% of our current employees would be eligible, which we know they won't be. It's going to be less than 1.5, but we currently have that built into the 12 million, 12.2.
That's part of the 12 million, and the 1.5 is actually high, because it's not going to be 100%. What's the current fund balance?
82 million.
Oh, projected into this year?
78.
78, which is 148 days.
Yes, sir.
Which is arguably 58 days above certain people's comfort level.
Arguably would be the term.
That's where, that's where history comes in. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
And I wanted to add on the question you asked on the TRS eligibility. They don't have to currently be paying in, so if we have retirees we've hired back, they would be eligible for this, because they, they just have to be working in an eligible position.
They have to fit within the dates.
Right, but they would be eligible, even though they're not paying in anymore.
Yeah, but they'd have to be full-time, considered full-time, for us.
Mr. Shore?
Yeah, I have one more. It's my knowledge that this board hires one employee, and, and that's the superintendent. And I think it's the superintendent's job to get everybody else here to do their job to the best of their ability. And so, I just want to share for the other trustees that, in considering this, I probably want to exclude one employee of the district from this if we do it.
Yeah, and although I don't get a vote, I would concur, and I believe that is why you hired me, why we do this, and the people out there doing all the hard work, making it happen, so, no, this is for our staff, and to exclude the superintendent in this, absolutely. That's my vote, anyway, I don't get one.
Is Mr. Hyatt, under Exhibit A, payment, it says the amount of the one-time supplemental payment, you know, an eligible employee receives is $500, and it says if the 2011-12 district ERG, we just received that, right? So, could it also be since the 2011-2012?
We could, I mean, if it, if it matters to you.
Well, I'm kind of struggling, as an Aggie who, if you do something twice, it's a tradition. I'm kind of wondering.
Woo, woo!
But I'm kind of, yeah, I'm not trying to read between the lines here, but, okay, so we do this, this is a one-time thing, is what I read in the resolution.
The resolution is structured that way, because I believe our attorney thinks, and she thinks that I think it, it has to be a one-time thing. You can't prospect...
That's what I'm wondering, is what message are, is our superintendent giving here? I'm kind of not seeing it. So, is this a one-time thing?
It's a one-time thing we're going to ask you to do every year, one time. Absolutely.
Okay, I'm just a little worried about tradition and speculative conjecture.
Well, and again, you make a great point, Ms. Klein. You know, everything's subject to where the resources are and where the, the revenue happens to be, and so, this obviously doesn't commit other boards or commit ourselves to something we may not be able to afford. We've already encumbered a two and a half percent increase that you can't go back on without cutting salaries, and that is never a pleasant thing, so it's, I think it's something that, it's a, it's the way to structure it, given the current times, but I would be remiss in not telling this board that our achievement's important to us, and when the resources are available, we're going to come back and ask you to do this again.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't it be magnificent if a year from now, we're debating whether, because we're number two in API, we should do this?
Yes.
And, and... We might be able to do more for number one.
That's a debate that we want to have.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand, and try to be clear on, because...
As you become a better golfer, it's harder to improve.
Yes. It's like percent body fat. You have none, it's hard to lose what you have.
I hope people are writing these down. These are, these are pretty valuable things right out there.
They are.
Absolutely.
I was just trying to understand what the, the action that was being listed here was actually going to include, and I am excited about the future, Mr. Shore. I just was trying to understand what, what we were being presented, so. Ms. Chaffin?
Perhaps this goes back to something I pick up at work, but in Exhibit A, under eligibility, subject to the availability of district funds. Until we get to a fund balance of zero, we got district funds.
That's true.
Could we make a slight modification there, subject to the availability of district funds and board appropriation of same?
Sure.
I, I think so.
I mean, that, that just, because I do think this is going to become a tradition.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if it's in there, subject to board appropriation, then, then you're absolutely covered.
Yeah, because we have our counsel out there, Meredith. You, yeah, I see you nodding your head in, in agreement, okay.
So, are we kind of at a point where we're ready to think about a motion here, or is there other discussions? Somebody want...
Okay. John? Mr. Matthews?
Be all this as it may.
What the hell is that?
I make a... I make a motion that we do approve the supplemental payment for all of our employees that meet these qualifications. I think it would be a great boost to our morale and an incentive to keep on keeping on.
Try that.
Mr. Matthews, would you like to reword your...
I move that the board approve this resolution as found in Item 4.F of the Board Book, related to one-time supplemental payments to employees for the 2013-2014 school year and to authorize the Board President and the Secretary of the Board to sign the resolution on behalf of the board.
As amended by Ms. Chaffin?
Yes.
Mr. Shore?
Mr. Matthews, with all due respect, would you entertain amending that to eliminate, except the superintendent?
Yes.
Thank you. With that amendment, I'll second that motion.
No, parliament... Who's the parliamentarian?
You can be, Ms. Chaffin.
All right. John's motion needs a second. Then there can be discussion. You can make a motion, that gets voted on, and then the whole amended motion gets voted on, just to keep us totally legal.
So we need a second, Ms. Chaffin?
May I second John's motion?
Yes.
Okay. Ask for discussion.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Shore or Ms.?
Yes, I think the motion stinks. I think it needs to exclude the superintendent.
Somebody needs to second Mr. Shore's motion, or not.
Is there anybody that would like to say that that stinks?
Don't we have to vote on the other motion first?
No, you... No, you don't, because if you vote on the motion at this point, it's done. So...
We vote it down, then they have another motion.
We can have as many motions until we get one we like.
I would prefer to see if anybody would like to second... Early in Mr. Shore's career, he couldn't get many seconds, so we'll see if he can get a second here tonight. Is there anybody willing to second Mr. Shore's motion? It looks like... Okay, well, just a minute. Mr. Goode?
Mr. Goode did.
Yes.
You're willing to second Mr. Shore's motion?
Shore's motion to exclude the superintendent.
I'm feeling the love.
So now we need to vote.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment...
Just the amendment.
Just the amendment. So just the excluding the one employee. Did we specify who that one employee is?
The superintendent.
Okay, so we're just going to exclude the superintendent, not Mr. Hyatt? Okay.
Well, he left, so he didn't hear it. Sorry.
Board members, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That motion... That amendment had seven in favor and zero opposed. So now we're going to vote on the whole thing. Mr. Matthews made a motion, Ms. Chaffin seconded it...
As amended.
As amended by Mr. Shore. All those in favor of the one-time supplemental? Please raise your right hand. All those opposed? That is seven in favor, zero opposed.
Confusion on my part. I'm sorry.
No kidding. Okay, we took the vote on the amendment.
Amendment.
I got that.
Right.
What happened after that?
We took the vote on the original...
On Mr. Matthews' original motion, as amended by the amendment.
Gotcha.
And then that passed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so just to clarify, we'll make those key points that you just discussed, and the final one that will be signed for the record. So it will be clear, and obviously you approved that, excluding the superintendent, which is appropriate, and we'll go from there, and every employee will be eligible, except for myself, because they did all the work anyway, so...
That's not true.
Well, most of it.
Definitely not true.
Yeah.
So I believe we've finished Item F, and we'll move on to Item G. Consider all matters incident and...
Part B.
Oh, part B.
The longevity.
Longevity.
Any other motion?
Actually, I thought it was all one resolution. It's all one resolution. The longevity is Exhibit B to the original resolution, so it's already done.
It was intended to be as one.
Where's our attorney we're paying out there to keep up with all this?
Did that motion exclude the superintendent from the entire resolution or just from Exhibit A?
Mr. Shore, can you clarify?
Legislative intent was only Resolution A.
That works.
I'm so confused.
You know what? They ought to make a movie called It's Complicated.
There is one.
There is one already.
But it's not about this. Item G, consider all matters, incident and related... This is going to be more interesting and exciting, correct, Ms. Tillman? Related to the issuance and sale of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building and Refunding Bonds, Series 2013, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bonds, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of such bonds, and delegating certain matters to authorized officials of the district.
We did present to you last month information related to issuing the remainder of our bonds, so we're going to review that information again this evening and ask that you authorize the bond order. We currently have $45,865,000 authorized but unissued bonds available. We are proposing that we issue the remainder of those bonds and also include a refinancing of existing bonds from the 2005 series. The current impact on our existing debt service from the issuance of the new money, you can see an increase of approximately $62.5 million. We have a savings of $3.2 million from the refunding, which would leave our debt service at $485 million. The projected tax rate impact with the new issue and refunding, you can see our proposed rate. Right now, we're at 2906. We would be able to remain at that rate and then continue to decline. This bottom line represents the original proposed rates in 2003, when the bonds were actually approved, the green numbers. The values did not go up at the same rate that was originally projected then, so that's why you see the difference in the rates. We are asking for a parameter bond order, which does require that certain criteria be met before the bonds are sold. The benefits, it provides the district flexibility so that we can sell the bonds when it's most favorable to us, rather than on a board meeting date. The parameters that we have established were provided with the assistance of First Southwest, which is here this evening, and they are financial advisors. They can provide any information you would like on these, along with any information on the current bond market, if you would like that information. But in the parameter order, we establish who is the pricing officers, which include the superintendent and associate superintendent. We establish a true interest cost for the new money and the refunding, a minimum savings threshold, the maximum amount that we can issue, along with maturity dates for both of those issues, and a date which we must have this accomplished by, which is July 31. If you approve this order, then we will continue the process of getting the official statement prepared and getting the pricing done late May, early June, which would allow for the funds to be received early July. And that is all of the information we have.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or discussion on Item G? Ms. Chaffin?
Ms. Klein, I move that we adopt the order authorizing the issuance of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building and Refunding Bonds, Series 2013, establishing the parameters for the sale and the issuance of such bonds and delegating those matters to the authorized officials of the district as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Chaffin.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Watten. We have a second by Ms. Watten. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That is seven in favor and zero opposed, Ms. Grubner. So that is unanimous, and that is outstanding, and I appreciate the work First Southwest has done, and working with Ms. Tillman and Mr. Hyatt to help us...
I appreciate the recognition.
...manage our money.
I appreciate the recognition. Dave Minich, our financial advisor at First Southwest, has been extremely helpful. Kristen Savant, also here representing Fulbright and Jaworski, notwithstanding her being a lawyer, she's one of the most intelligent and helpful person in this area that I've ever had a doctor.
I think that was a compliment, but I'm not sure. Lawyers have feelings too, you know.
Some do.
Comments from board members? I was going to say, to our staff, I appreciate the staff recommendations that were sometimes unique, that are brought to us to consider. As an engineer, I prefer non-unique events. This one appears is going to be non-unique. It looks like it's a tradition, possibly, that makes me scared. But I think that I appreciate the wisdom that y'all use and the thoughtfulness to try to do what's best to reward and motivate and stimulate the staff that we have to achieve to our highest potential to help our kids, which is what we're all here for. We kind of laugh and joke, but it's really just to make the evening go smoother or faster or something. But it really is a serious business that we're here for, and we appreciate what everybody's doing. If you would relay that to your campuses, we would appreciate it. We do not take the spending of money lightly, but I think that when you do have the funds set aside for the number of days operating above what we have to have, it's something that, when we make strides like we did recently with the ERG data, it's... Well, $500, it can be a lot, you know, it can make a big difference. You know, it adds up to a lot, but it's something that... It's a celebration of what we've achieved, so...
Well said.
Any other comments from board members? Y'all are good.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Shore?
I believe that we're going to have Ms. Chaffin for at least one more board member, one more board meeting.
And a graduation.
And a graduation.
Maybe.
In the unlikely event we don't, I want to express my gratitude to you for the wisdom and guidance that you share with us and what you do for this district. So I want to make sure that that doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chaffin has been on the board for 15 years.
Yes.
You probably didn't look any younger back then, right? You stayed just all sparkly.
I think I did look a little younger back then.
But 15 years, think back to where you were 15 years ago, and think of the amount of time that Ms. Chaffin has given to our board. And Ms. Chaffin received the Life Member PTA Award, but I see Ms. Villamaret has escaped. But we... You know, there are recognitions, the board... We don't get salary increases. We just continue...
Actually, Dr. Burns has doubled our salary several times.
Every year of service, you get an... It's doubled, yes, right.
So, but thank you, Ms. Chaffin, and we hope that you join us again, because we certainly appreciate the wisdom that you help impart in the years of experience you have doing what we're doing.
I'd just like to say that also there are four people sitting out there in our audience who are trying to occupy this seat, and I just want to extend my appreciation to all four of you for taking the time and effort and the desire to be sitting up here with us. And I thank you all for that. You've got some big shoes to fill, whichever one of you wins, you've got some pretty big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any other comments from board members? Otherwise, by golly, it looks like we are reaching the end of our agenda. Y'all are done? So by my determination on Item Number Eight, we've reached the end of our agenda. We are adjourned at 9:36 PM. Good night.
Good job.